Senator Feinstein had authored the first federal ban on assault weapons, which was in effect from 1994 to 2004. Since then, gun control advocates have tried several times to revive it. All of those times have failed, but the hope is that the aftermath of the Florida shooting will change all that.
California already has some of the toughest gun laws in the nation, enforcing a ban on assault weapons and following up with a gun violence restraining law that allows courts to seize firearms from people they believe to be unsafe. The city of Los Angeles also has a safe storage law that requires guns to be locked away or disabled at home when not in use. L.A. City Attorney Mike Fuer says measures like these are why California has fewer mass shootings overall compared to other states with looser rules. But he is concerned about firearms from outside coming into our area.
There was a proposal that is still pending that passed the House that would allow anyone with a concealed carry permit from any place in the country to go to any other state and legally have a concealed weapon. How dangerous is that? Here in California, there are strict standards for anybody to get a concealed weapon. In Arizona, you don't even need a permit.
Fuer says tougher federal laws would further protect Los Angeles and the rest of the country. I'm Gil Reyes for L.A. This Week.
So far Feinstein's federal bill has 29 members of the Senate supporting, none of them Republican. Turning now to the threat of deportation, it hangs like a dark cloud over thousands of Angelenos. The president's order to end temporary protected status has local leaders searching for solutions before time is up. Gil Reyes has more from City Hall.
The program is called Temporary Protected Status, or TPS, and it has allowed refugees from disaster and war-torn nations to remain in the U.S. until problems in their homelands improve. President Trump has decided to end the program for several nations, many say prematurely, forcing recipients to possibly leave soon or to hide.
They'll be fearful to report crime. They won't seek medical attention when it's needed.
Outside City Hall, the city's immigrant advocate Peter Shea says L.A.'s overall health and public safety could be compromised. Temporary protected status for Nicaraguans is expected to expire this January. For Haitians, in July 2019. For Salvadorans, the clock is also ticking. Immigration raids at home could follow.
Now, the hope is these forced departures and deportations can be avoided. Shea says a lawsuit is in the works, with the city of L.A.'s support challenging the end of TPS. He also says lawyers are working on legal documents, protections that TPS recipients could show to federal agents at the door, informing them of the rights.
First, they came after our Dreamers, then the Haitians, Nicaraguans, Salvadorans, and now all of California.
L.A. City Councilman Curran Price referring to the Trump administration's new lawsuit against the state. The suit claims California is illegally protecting undocumented immigrants from federal deportations. Councilman Gilbert Sadio disagrees.
We have the strength of the U.S. Constitution, and so we will continue here in the city of Los Angeles and the state of California to continue to resist those efforts.
I'm Gil Reyes for L.A. This Week.
Now, there's also hope Congress can agree on a pathway to citizenship for TPS recipients before their residencies expire. Say you're a victim of a crime. Did you know the government can help pay for your medical and relocation costs if you qualify? On this National Crime Victims Rights Week, we shine a light on a somewhat obscure program that's grown locally and online. Gil Reyes has more from the LAPD's Van Nuys Police Station. Gil?
Yes, Yana, very important information for victims of all sorts of crime, from domestic violence to sexual assault. They now have an advocate set up here through the L.A. City Attorney's Office at every single LAPD station, and they can apply for these free services online.
For sex crime victims, the walk up to an LAPD station to request legal and financial help can be difficult.
Many times either the victims are embarrassed, or they're just afraid because, you know, they've never been a victim of a crime before, or they don't know what to expect.
The city attorney's Victim Assistance Program has been helping victims for nearly four decades get back on their feet.
I've worked with sexual assault victims, child sexual assault. I've worked with attempted murders. Most of them are fearful. Most of them are afraid that the defendant's going to come after them, so you have to be just very compassionate.
Ifunaya Guacham is one of the advocates now assigned to all 21 LAPD stations since March. She'll help walk you through the application process for victim compensation. It's funded by the state. Domestic violence and sexual assault victims can receive up to $2,000 in relocation fees, compensation for funeral and burial costs, up to $7,500. Medical and dental bills may be covered, too.
People don't know that we're here. A lot of people don't know that they can get these services. So many people have bills and collections that they can't pay.
Victims can make appointments through the website or by using the newly-launched mobile app.
You use the system, you go to helplecrimenvictims.org, you'll be able to pull up our website, get information about our program, and put in a request for assistance to meet with one of our victim advocates in one of those locations. Search Victim Assistance on Google Play or the iTunes Store, you'll be able to see our app and download it for free.
I'm Gil Reyes for L.A. This Week.
Appointments online or through the app can put you in touch with an advocate within 24 hours. A giant recruitment fair at the mayor's Getty House, as Mayor Eric Garcetti seeks to fill more police and firefighter positions with women. Anna Marcos was there and has the story.
These young women are trying on L.A. firefighter gear for fun, but recruiting, training, and inducting them into the ranks of the L.A. Fire Department and LAPD is serious business, as city leaders work to attract more women into these jobs. This mega-recruitment event is one of Garcetti's many efforts to bring more women into traditionally male-dominated police and firefighter jobs. The LAPD is seeing 10% of its academy classes filled with women, and female recruitment in the Fire Department has shot up by 40%. Among the eager candidates, young women in the police and fire cadet programs.
I learned how to be more disciplined, not only in the program, but around my community and within my house.
And your school?
Yes.
You get to actually be in that, like, that building that's on fire, and while other people are scared and everything, and they train you to remain calm and just do what you have to do. We have to wear all of our gear, which is our turnout gears, our SCBA, and we, sometimes we have to carry ladders or forcible entry tools. Like, they may not look heavy, but when you're walking, like, at least, like, over a block or two, you're like, wow, like, this is, like, weight.
The city has launched a new effort, the Pledge to Patrol Program. It's a bridge between the cadet program and the police academy, and it even pays for your college tuition.
I'm actually starting the academy next month. I'll be the first one out of this program to start the actual police academy.
We go and we work with detectives, we go on ride-alongs, we do a lot of community relations, you know, the detective gangs, you know, we see that there are people wanting to help people, so they have this drive, and I'm like, I want, I want to be on that train, too. Like, let me get on your drive.
Females have a lot more compassion that they bring to the job. They bring a different aspect, like, the communication side, and, you know, because guys can be a little rough around the edges, and it's like, the girls can bring that compassion, and it's like, you can do it like the guys, and you can even do it two times better than the guys.
If that is true, the gritty jobs of patrolling the streets and saving lives are about to get extra doses of compassion. I'm Anna Marcos for L.A. This Week.
Since becoming mayor, Garcetti has also filled more than half of the city's commissioner seats with women. It's a permanent welcoming space where people facing homelessness can get help on the spot. Rasha Goel has more on this new resource.
Three, two, one.
A vacant civic center kiosk across from Parker Center on Los Angeles Street is now a homeless help desk. It will provide individuals with information on services, resources, and shelter information.
Putting a help desk here right in front of City Hall sends a loud message to everyone in Los Angeles about what Los Angeles is about, that we do care, we want to be there for every Angelino, no matter what income level, no matter what struggles you're going through, we are here to help, and we all could do more, and we should be doing more.
Today, four of our current older Workers Program participants, formerly homeless, are placed here at the help desk. This is their job training program, and they are helping us to reach out to a population that oftentimes doesn't get connected to the services that they need.
The unveiling of the kiosk is part of Homeless Connect Day, where homeless service providers will be available on hand to assist those experiencing homelessness with information they may need.
People who are homeless can come out of the shadows, can ask for help, that they deserve help.
Hopes are their support and experiences will help other homeless individuals.
Tragedies happen every time people end up, you know, in situations where, you know, they need comfort, you know, and need to feel, you know, safe.
We help them with basic necessities, hygiene, pillows, blankets, stuff to keep them warm. Today, we have brand-new jackets we're passing out, with t-shirts and dog, pet food, and beds, and we're just here to help them be a little more comfortable in their uncomfortable situation.
The homeless help desk is a collaboration between Councilman Huizar's office and the mayor's office. I'm Rasha Goel for L.A. This Week.
The homeless help desk is located in a kiosk behind City Hall East and is open six days a week, Monday through Saturday. Mental health services have a new permanent home in the underserved community of Watts. As Gil Reyes reports, the move is years in the making.
If you live in this part of South Los Angeles, there's a new option for low-cost mental health services. The Southern California Counseling Center opens its first satellite facility in Watts.
This was my ambition from the minute that I got hired to the center, was to get us out of the building and out into the community, where we can serve people in the neighborhood rather than them coming to us.
At the grand opening, we learn of the history. The original center has served people in the mid-city area since the late 1960s. Their services in Watts only began in 2014, and on a limited basis only, through the Watts Labor Community Action Committee.
And as the need increased in the community, we wanted to be able to service more people in the community.
And so a permanent, six-room building at the Watts Committee campus opens. There is a six-week waiting list for services set up by the courts, or you can set up on your own. Substance abuse, relationship counseling, and anger management services included. In Watts, I'm Gil Reyes for L.A. This Week.
Services are for individuals, couples, and families. The folks at the center say their rates are low and on a sliding scale. We all know L.A. suffers from a housing crunch, and often tenants feel the pinch from landlords trying to raise rents or evict people illegally. But a free workshop in Council District One aims to change that. Anna Marcos has more.
City leaders got an earful from residents at this Housing and Tenants Rights Workshop and Legal Clinic. Apparently, there are a lot of rental and housing gripes in this area of Pico Union.
The biggest one is that landlords want to kick out or evict their tenants to raise the prices, and of course, that's illegal.
Within our community, we have about over 85% who are renters, and so there's a lot of, you know, compliance issues from landlords, a lot of, you know, filth in the buildings, rodent issues. A lot of the families are feeling unsafe, and so these are a lot of the issues that we're discussing.
This event is one of a series of housing rights workshops held throughout Council Member Gil Sadio's District One. A joint effort by Sadio's office, the L.A. Housing Community Investment Department, and local lawyers who provide free pro bono legal help for tenants. Residents are finding out when they can and can't get evicted, what rent increases are allowable, and how to get help when they're living in unsafe conditions.
Sometimes, we think we don't have rights to, you know, like, to protect our, our rights.
Regardless of their legal status, they need to know that they're protected under the law here in Los Angeles.
I wish that a lot of people can learn, can come to these workshops and learn more to, for themselves or to share with other people.
But for these tenants at least, knowledge is power, and now they will be a force to be reckoned with in the rental market. I'm Anna Marcos for L.A. This Week.
Lawyers from Ferias Legales provided pro bono work for the workshop. Well, it's about to undergo a major transformation, and officials hope, once completed, it will help transform lives. Rasha Goel has more on a future facility dedicated to at-risk youth.
This may be an empty garage, but soon it will be a renovated youth recreation center.
This empty space is about to be transformed into dance studios, music studios, a fitness center, really exciting youth development opportunities for some of our most at-risk youth here in the East Valley.
The project has been in the works for eight years and been a pivotal one for the New Directions for Youth Organization. The organization has been around for 43 years and has continuously worked to create a positive atmosphere for at-risk youth.
We know that the youth who struggle the most are low-income youth who are of color, brown or black, and those youth are falling behind terribly in school, they are dropping out at higher rates than other youth, and they are struggling to become productive citizens. They, they suffer within the family from domestic violence and child abuse. A lot of the youth we work with are in foster care.
The new 5,000-square-foot facility will help provide activities that also serve as a preventative measure to help these kids lead productive lives.
I was very proud that we were able to get $600,000 in funding to make this project happen, and that's money very well invested in preventing some of these young people from falling into the clutches of gangs or substance abuse.
It gives them an opportunity to really begin to build a foundation for a better life.
He also says investing in the youth is part of a worthy long-term crime reduction strategy. I'm Rasha Goel for L.A. This Week.
The new center will offer programs such as after-school tutoring, counseling, art therapy, life skills, and more. Families in Venice headed outdoors for a day at the beach, not to play, but to help save the planet. As Gil Reyes reports, you're invited, too.
The Geisler family is among the locals, helping to pick up trash in Venice Beach.
Keep the ocean clean and the animals alive.
You know, this is why we live here. It's a beautiful area, we get the mountains, the beach, and, you know, it's our responsibility to clean it up.
The environmental nonprofit group Heal the Bay organized this event.
Today is our monthly nothing-but-sand cleanup, where we gather people from all over the county and welcome them to one of our local beaches, and they all pitch in, and we try to get as much trash off as we can.
Around 15 years ago, Heal the Bay was lucky to get 100 people to show up. Today, the group says 1,000 volunteers typically attend. Cleanups take place every third Saturday at a different beach, drawing church groups, alumni associations, and more.
Why is L.A. women investing in a sustainable economy? And I'm here primarily to support that group, but also to support this little one up above me, because we need to make a difference and kind of change the way the world is moving right now.
Many of the volunteers oppose offshore drilling and other plans by the federal government that they say threaten our oceans. You can do your part to help save the planet by volunteering at the next coastal cleanup. Find out where at healthebay.org. I'm Gil Reyes for L.A. This Week.
Heal the Bay hosts volunteer cleanups in the Santa Monica Bay, from Will Rogers State Beach to Torrance. While city leaders highlight L.A.'s attributes in the hopes of attracting more investors, trash collection goes high-tech in Council District Four, and spring is in the air at the L.A. Zoo. All these stories in City B. The city of L.A. held its fourth Regional Investors Conference recently. Several city departments were on hand and highlighted all that Los Angeles has to offer for potential investors. Mayor Eric Garcetti talked about advancements in basic city services, economic growth, and infrastructure.
So if you want to see the face of the world today, come to L.A. If you want to see the face of this country tomorrow, come to L.A. Whether it's investments we're making in higher education, whether it's the 2028 Olympics, when the world will come here again, this is truly one of those great decades that will, I believe, lay the foundation for another 50 years of prosperity.
Councilmember David Rue, the Bureau of Sanitation and Representatives from E-Cube, installed the first of five solar-powered compacting trash bins on Wilshire Boulevard in the mid-city area. Officials say the bins are not only a more sustainable way to keep Los Angeles clean, but use mobile technology like sensors to alert L.A. sanitation when a bin is full for more efficient waste removal.
With this technology, we can increase the capacity of waste collection, and also with the data with, with L.A. sanitation, we'll be able to understand waste generation patterns and histories, and ultimately increase the efficiency of waste collection.
These sensors will save the city time, save the city money, and save the city energy.
Families hopped into spring and had fun at the L.A. Zoo's Bug Bunny's Spring Fling. There was plenty of activities on hand, including a seed-planting craft station, a bunny education station, animal presentations, face painting, and spring dance.
It's such a special experience for families to come here and connect with each other and nature, and learn about wildlife here at the zoo and in the wild, and what they can do to protect and safeguard wildlife and wild habitats.
A senior center in Council District Nine is not only taking care of its older population, but it's also bringing seniors together. Rasha Goel has more.
It gives us something to do and makes us reunite with one another and support each other.
Kathy Brown is among the seniors who is excited for the grand reopening of the Estelle Van Meter Multipurpose Senior Center in South Los Angeles. Thanks to this center, seniors will have free access to information, resources, and activities that can help them live fulfilling lives.
And we also have one of the most diverse older adult populations in the country. So what you'll see in the center is that you have African-American seniors, Latino seniors, Caucasian seniors, other folks from, that live in this community, coming here. Those seniors no longer have to stay home and be isolated, and they no longer have to travel a longer distance to find one over other sites.
The city's Department of Aging has been working with Councilman Curran Price's office in creating services at the center. The councilman was able to secure $500,000 in funding per year for operation of the facility.
That's going to just help facilitate many of the programs that take place now in terms of the nutrition programs, the, the health programs, education programs. So it's going to really be an exciting center of operation.
The senior population is a growing population in Los Angeles, and this is the second center geared towards helping seniors in the ninth district. Now, it's taken about four years to help create and implement a program that helps seniors here in this community. The center has been open for several years, but is being rededicated. It is named after Estelle Van Meter.
She was a strong advocate for families and for kids, for making sure that the city, this area, part of town received the services that it deserved, and that it was actively engaged in, in the decision-making process.
And her work has helped pave the way for many here.
And it gave me like a woman, a voice, you know, and helped them to pay bills, helped them to get around to different places, like doctor's office, you know, apartments and stuff like that. So, it's really a great thing.
A great thing, to know you can help bring fulfillment to the lives of others. In South Los Angeles, I'm Rasha Goel for L.A. This Week.
There are 27 senior centers in the city of Los Angeles. Go back in time to witness an authentic Victorian fashion show, help keep one of our precious resources clean, and discover the unique flavor of Toluca Lake during an Earth Day celebration. All this and this week's things to do. Legend has it that a Duchess was too hungry to wait for a late dinner, so she began an afternoon custom of enjoying a selection of biscuits and cakes with her friends. Queen Victoria learned of this activity and also fell in love with the idea. By the late 1840s, the royal household was hosting daily tea parties, which later became known as afternoon tea. Join the Heritage Square Museum for a Victorian afternoon tea and fashion show, as it presents First Ladies of Fashion. Whether they're American, French, or English, First Ladies have always been fashion trend centers. Some of the more notable American First Ladies, from Martha Washington to the most iconic and fashionable First Lady Jackie Kennedy, will be showcased. It all takes place April 14 from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. at the Heritage Square Museum, located at 3,800 Homer Street. For more, visit heritagesquare.org. One of the best ways you can help preserve the present and future health of the L.A. River is by joining a cleanup effort. The group Friends of the L.A. River and nearly 10,000 of its closest friends team up each year to beautify the entire length of the river, the largest urban river cleanup in America. For 29 years, the group and Angelenos have cleaned the Los Angeles River and protected our oceans from trash and refuse. Join the effort on Saturday, April 14, for the biggest urban river cleanup in the country. For more, visit folar.org. Greater Toluca Lake Neighborhood Council is hosting its seventh annual Earth Day celebration featuring Taste of Toluca. The event will be highlighted by a keynote delivered by Ed Begley Jr. and an appearance by L.A. Stormwater as the Trash Monster. You're invited to join the Greater Toluca Lake Neighborhood Council in celebrating our beautiful planet and discovering this hidden gem of a neighborhood. The event features over 40 festive booths, including local merchants and nonprofit agencies sharing environmental and green living information and services. At the same time, Taste of Toluca will offer complimentary small plates of favorite foods from a wide variety of local purveyors. Family fun includes a kids' activity corner and a recycled art contest. Contest winners will receive a week of art camp donated by Stephen Kate's Camp. Live music and entertainment on the center stage will be featured throughout the day. Admission is free. It all takes place on Sunday, April 15, from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. And that's a look at some things to do. Well, that's going to do it for this edition. I'm Yana Kane from All of Us here at L.A. This Week. Thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of L.A. This Week.
You know, honey, I've been thinking. You're not prepared for an earthquake. Take this antique vase your mom got you. If the big one hit, be a goner. Or this clay penguin you made in 3rd grade. History. By simply stropping loose furniture to the wall and putting putty under loose items, you can prevent serious injury and damage. Nothing is safe, even poor Uncle Petey. Get the message? Be prepared.
Hi, I'm Chris. I'm an Ayengar yoga teacher here in Los Angeles, and you're watching LA City View, Channel 35, Our City, Our Channel. Namaste.
Good morning, good morning, good morning. Today is Tuesday, April 10th. Want to welcome everybody to the Los Angeles City Council. Madam Clerk, we have a quorum. Could you please call the roll? Shhh. Call the roll.
Blumenfeld, Bonin, Buscagno, Sadio, Englander, Harris-Dawson, Weezer, Corretz, Gracorin, Martinez, O'Farrell, Price, Rodriguez, Rue Wesson, 10 members present, and a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you. First order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Martinez moves, O'Farrell seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Englander moves, Harris-Dawson seconds. That brings us where?
Mr. President, today is Tuesday and time for the flag salute.
Mr. Bonin, would you lead us in today's flag salute, please? Would all rise, all please rise for our flag salute.
Please place your hands over your heart. Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, let's go through the agenda.
Mr. President, there are requests to continue items 2 through 7 to April 17th and item 15 to April 13th.
So ordered, continue.
The Department of Building and Safety requests that the following items be received and filed. Items 1E and I, as the liens have been paid in full. 1K, as the property has been determined to be an owner-occupied, single-family dwelling. 1H and Q, as the liens have been paid and the remaining amounts rescinded. 1L, reduce the lien amount to $1,262.12 and continue to May 9th. 1M and N, reduce the lien amounts to $1,038.80 and continue to May 9th. 1R, reduce the amount to $604.83 and continue to May 9th. And 1V, reduce the lien amount to $2,207.25 and continue to May 9th. And 1F, continue to May 9th.
Okay, so ordered, continue.
Mr. President, for item number 7, per the Planning Department, the project description should read under recommendation number 2, "For the construction, use, maintenance, and expansion of a 2,940-square-foot fuel service station and convenience store with eight pumps."
Okay, let's prepare to vote on these items. Do you have cards?
On items 1 through 13, which were noted for public hearing, there are cards on item 1.
Okay, let's hold that and vote on the remaining. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay, continue.
Items 14 through 37 are items which public hearings have been held. There is a request to hold item 20 on the desk.
We'll hold that item, Mr. Corretz.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to have item 16 continued for 60 days.
Okay, we'll, we'll continue Mr. Corretz's item until June 8th, I believe, right?
Correct, so that's item 16.
And then I'm told to hold item 35 for Mr. Sadio, Mr. or Mr. Weezer, you want it 35?
Yeah, just 35 on the desk, and if somebody has seen my little foam thing from my microphone, please give it back. Thank you very much. Mr. O'Farrell, did you get my foam thing from the microphone?
Mr. Englander, I saw him.
Okay.
Okay, let's prepare to vote.
I have one for sale if he needs one.
Let us prepare to vote on the remaining items. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Where are we now?
Items 38 through 44, items for which public hearings have not been held, 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, without objection, those items are now before this body. Do you have cards?
There are no cards on these items.
Okay, let's prepare to vote on these items. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
That brings us where?
Mr. President, that takes council back to presentations, items called special, or general public comment.
Okay, Mr. O'Farrell.
Item 33 forthwith, please.
33 forthwith. Hey, sergeants, I'm gonna start, I'm gonna take so quick public comment. Okay, if I could get Ms. McAllister, I thought I saw you earlier. If you please come down. Okay, Mr. McAllister, you have 1 minute for item 1, and then 1 minute for general public comment. Please go ahead.
Okay, item 1, I'm glad to see that you are taking some of these liens off of housing here, and, but I see you've added over 20, so we need to stop all of this putting liens on homes and just help these people and let them know that there's HHH money available for them to fix up these homes and remove those liens, and if they're behind on their taxes, or if they can't pay their mortgage, they can also get some help. So that's what we need to start doing. We don't need all, any HHH agreement, it said we're trying to keep people off the street, not put them on the street. So that's why we need that. Now, my public comment...
Can we give her her minute for general public comment?
I, there was a meeting yesterday, a meeting concerning the, the city attorney asking for more lawyers, almost a million dollars worth of more lawyers. And in that, they asked, they used a reference for a government, government code, and that government code is not right, 54956.9D1. They said they wanted to take that into special closed meeting, closed-door meeting, and they cited, they cited this government pursuant to government code 54956.9, and D is in David 1. That's illegal. That code does not have anything to do with you hiring more lawyers. That code is for something totally different. I looked up the code, okay? I used to work for law firms, I know what I'm talking about. You cannot take a closed meeting into these, these attorneys. These attorneys are already getting 124 million on payroll in this city, and you keep hiring these outside attorneys, and every time you start these new programs, you put 300,000, a million into that city attorney's office. I want an investigation.
Thank you, Ms. McAllister. Thank you very much. Okay, at this point in time, in fact, get a little closer. I'm gonna, we're gonna start our, our, if I get a little wider shot here, we're gonna start our presentation portion, but I want to introduce to those of you that are here today, a dear friend of mine, Kyle Irvine. We go back 100 years ago, we, we were Pop Warner coaches together, so do me a favor and give my buddy Kyle Irvine a round of applause. He's a real good man and a dear friend. Ms. Martinez, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good morning, colleagues. I'd like to have our special guest join me.
Go ahead.
Good morning, colleagues. I'm very excited to lead a very special presentation this morning. Since I was elected to this party, I have been an advocate for advocating for victims' rights, whether it's victims of human trafficking, victims of child abuse, or victims of immigration crimes. I've always believed that our responsibility as elected officials is to make sure that the most vulnerable communities have a voice in our city. This is why today we recognize National Crime Victims Rights Week. From April 8th through 14th, the initiative promotes victims' rights, honors victims of crimes, and those who advocate on their behalf. This year's theme is expand the circle, reach all victims. It is important that we as a city are doing all we can to make sure that victims of crimes receive the services that they need. The city's Victims Assistance Program works compassionately and effectively to promote the rights of victims while providing services that meet the unique needs of those impacted. This program has provided services for victims for almost four decades. In the past year, they have assisted 10,456 victims of various crimes. This unit behind me is not only trained and experienced with, experienced, but they have gone above and beyond to assist victims through their criminal justice process. And this year, it will be the first time in history that the program provides citywide coverage to all 21 LAPD stations, including four traffic divisions. I am especially proud to say that in Council District 6, it means LAPD divisions Van Nuys, Fort Hill Mission, West Valley, will now have advocate services. The Victims Assistance Program has also helped fill gaps in services that many types of, many types of crimes, including one that is near and dear to my heart, which is victims of human trafficking. The program helps fill gaps in services through partnerships with CAS and JourneyOut. This, this would not be possible if it wasn't for grants that are secured by the Victims Assistance Program directed by Derek Tenel. Because of the funding, our advocates, we have now an advocate position that is located at the Strength United Family Justice Center in CD6 and has assisted almost 486 victims just this year alone. Please, let's give them a big round of applause for all their hard work and dedication to making sure this program is successful. With me, I have our city attorney, Mr. Fear. Would we like to say a few words?
Thank you, Councilmember Martinez. I, I wanted to note a couple things before we hear from the leader of our program in this office. You know, the fact that our city attorney's office does so much for victims of crime is not widely known, and it's really important that every council district be aware of the services available, because if not, victims of crime will not be able to take advantage of the fact that, for example, last year alone, our Victims Assistance Team got more than $3 million for victims of crime, connected them with myriad services, enabling them to try to restore what was lost from them when they were victimized in crime. I want to point out that Derek Tenel, who leads this program, has been with our office for more than 20 years. He leads this program with the same courage and toughness and vision that he displayed when he was a tight end for UCLA, and then for the Dallas Cowboys and others. So he protects victims in the same way he protected quarterbacks a little bit in those days. I also want to point out that it's especially important in this age to note that a victim of crime who seeks our services will never be asked about her immigration status. And in many districts throughout our city, we know that there are victims of crime, because our office talks about this internally, who aren't even prepared to acknowledge they speak Spanish in the context of interactions with law enforcement anymore. This needs to change on many different levels, but for today... This needs to change on many different levels, but for today, it's important to note that every victim of crime in Los Angeles has access to these extraordinary services. And now I'll turn things back over to Ms. Martinez, but I want to say to all our advocates who are here with us today, can they stand up for a second?
Give them a round of applause. Welcome to City Hall.
These are the faces of the advocates victims of crime can turn to throughout our city, in every neighborhood to seek the help that they need. Norrie, thank you so much for highlighting this program this morning, and also, by the way, I want to thank our partners at Verizon Wireless, from whom you'll hear in a moment as well. Thank you, Norrie.
Thank you very much, Mr. City Attorney, and I would like to introduce someone who's instrumental in ensuring that the, the success of the Victim Assistance Program, the director, Derek Tenel.
Are you going to introduce the video?
Yes. Thank you, Councilwoman Martinez, appreciate the introduction. Thank you. It's important that we understand that there are certain folks in the city that support victims and victims' rights, and Councilmember Martinez is one of the leaders in that field, as well as the city attorney, so thank you both for your support of our program. Right now, I'd like to cue up a video that we put together to introduce our new technology. So here we have our website here for, we introduced that last year during National Crime Victims Rights Week. This is our homepage right here. If you go to helplecrimivictors.org, you'll get to our website. We made some enhancements to the system where we included some additional languages. We have, I think, fifteen new languages that the program's going to be able to transfer into, so we're looking forward to sharing that with more people throughout the city. If you hit the button here on the website called Request for Assistance, you'll go and find a map of all the different locations that we have staffed throughout the city. You can pick that location and find a victim advocate to get some assistance from as a crime victim. Here's our new smartphone app. You see right here, it's just been introduced, it's already, and available to download right now. We have our office locations, victim service information, victims' resources, victims' rights with Marcy's Law, we have a special grant for the LGBTQ community, we have a media gallery. If you hit the Request for Assistance button here, you will pick up some additional fields to fill out that information, pick a location where we have an advocate, you'll get a confirmation right here that that request has been submitted. Again, the app is available on the App Store and Google Play. If you search Victim Assistance, it's available today, free of charge. Before I pass it over to the council member, I'd like to acknowledge Three D I Incorporated. Those folks are the people who developed our smartphone app, they've worked with us for many years to make that happen, our smartphone app and our case management system, so we can give them a nice round of applause. And I also wanted to bring up someone from Verizon Wireless, Shannon Champion, she's the Associate Legal Counsel for Verizon Wireless. They were generous enough to give us the grant to pay for both of these projects. Shannon?
Good morning, it's an honor to be here today, and I thank you on behalf of Verizon Wireless for this recognition. Verizon, through its Hope Line program, provides grant funding to many leading organizations that support victims and survivors of domestic violence. Several years ago, we were approached by the city to participate in, in this important program, the Victim Assistance Program. Thank you. By providing a technology grant, and as you just saw on the screen, that's a technology at work in the program, so we're very proud to be a partner with the city, and applaud the city for its efforts in this area. Thank you again.
Thank you. And Derek, on behalf of the city of Los Angeles, I want to recognize your efforts and recognize the National Crime Victims Rights Week as April eighth, and thank you very much for all the work that you do. This is not only on behalf of the city, but on behalf of other victims that your program has assisted. Thank you very much.
And Ms. Martinez, if I could recognize Ms. Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ms. Martinez, thank you so much for bringing in this terrific program and helping to raise awareness about its availability for so many of the victims who unfortunately have to endure so much trauma. You know, I think it's really great that the city attorney's office has been instrumental in their leadership to provide this service for so long. Derek and I go back a number of years, going back to our tenure in the Reardon administration, so I know no one better to be helping to lead this effort in the city attorney's office. But again, thank you so much for helping to raise the awareness. I think this app is a very important means of helping to create more accessibility at a time when people are probably the most vulnerable. And so, again, I think it's outstanding that you guys continue to do this work. Thank you very much for, for helping to raise awareness on this very important service.
Thank you, Ms. Rodriguez. Mr. President, we're not quite done yet. I, I want to recognize two amazing city employees that are with us here today that are retiring from decades of service with the Victims, Victim Assistance Program. I'd like to recognize them here today. We have Yolanda Irvine.
I know that one.
Yolanda?
Let's give Yolanda a round of applause.
She knows you too, Mr. President. Yolanda began her career in nineteen eighty-eight as a certified victim assistance coordinator for the city attorney's office, and she has worked side by side with law enforcement officers, often assisting victims in crisis and gaining their trust, which aided them in prosecution of suspects. I want to give her a big round of applause, and thank you very much for your decades of service to victims in the city of Los Angeles. Our second retiree is Paula Ramos. I'll have you please stand up, come forward. Ms. Ramos began her career in nineteen seventy-nine as a legal secretary and legal clerk for the city attorney's office, central trials agency unit, and victim assistance program. She has had a long, successful career dedicated to her service as a certified victim assistance coordinator at Hollenbeck Police Department. Mr. City Attorney, I don't know if you want to say a few words, but I want to give also Paula a big round of applause for her decades of service to victims in the city of Los Angeles. Thank you. And we have certificates for each one of you. This is for Yolanda, on behalf of the city of Los Angeles, thank you very much, and for Paula. Thank you very much. We'll take pictures.
Thank you for your service. Thank you so very much.
Mr. President, I just want to say a couple words. So Yolanda served for thirty years before she retired in February, and Paula served for thirty-nine years. This is a great day, because we get to have these two fine women exemplify what it means to actually serve the public at what, for many people, will be among their most difficult hours, when they've been victimized by crime. And I think all of us have learned a lot from you, and we wish you very well in your next phases in life, with grandchildren, with husbands, and others who've been missing you because you've been working so hard. Now they'll get the benefit of you full-time. Congratulations for your work. Thank you, Ms. Martinez.
One more round of applause.
Thank you, Ms. Rodriguez. With Ms. Rodriguez up here. And we want to talk to Yolanda.
Sergeants, I want to call up Mr. Walsh. So, Mr. Walsh, you have one minute on item one, and then you have general public comment. And Mr. Robinson, Richard Robinson, if you could come up behind Mr. Walsh? Yes, sir, Mr. Walsh?
Yeah, I signed up for one, two, and three.
Yeah, but we already took care of it, Mr. Walsh, you got here late. You're on item one and general public comment.
Item one here is building and safety. You do a good job on building and safety, except across the street from me, at Yucca and Argyle, the alarm, the fire alarm has been going on for four days, and when I talk to the cops, they don't speak English.
I think we've moved into general public comment.
Okay, so now give him his one minute for general public comment.
I, I like the heckling that's going on. Mr. Bonin is explaining the world to Mr. Blumenfield, and Mr. Fekorian, he hopes to become the president of the United States, but it'll have to wait until after the mayor has his shot at it. The mayor, where is he? He's out running for president. Everybody knows that. Patrick, who runs, owns The Times, knows that, but they're keeping it quiet. You're only going to get the truth from here, okay? The president, the mayor is, he's worthless, and I'm telling you right now, that, remember when the Dodgers lost the pennant? They spent two hundred thousand dollars building a, a stage over there, and they didn't use it.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh, thank you. If I could get Mr. Robinson, and then do we have Emily Crouppen? Emily, are you here? Emily, please come and get in line, and then Claudio Bovell? Claudio? Go ahead, Mr. Robinson.
Mr. President, members, Donald Trump is a one-term president. Sir, less than three years, we will see Hillary sworn unless a dark horse candidate wins. President Clinton's best advisor will be Bill, a former president protecting the national health care reform. When she was Secretary of State, Hillary protected thousands in Benghazi from those who would offer murder, rape, torture because of Gaddafi's killing. When former President Obama asked for marine protection for the embassy, he was denied by the Republicans, keeping secret vital information by utilizing her email instead of the telephone. She did what Colin Powell did, keep secret certain information. I'm preaching to the choir, you know this, but in less than three years, we got a Democrat president. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson. So Ms. Crouppen? And then, Miss, after, Mr. Bovell, do we have Ms. Ramirez? Go right ahead, ma'am.
Good morning, my name is Emily Crouppen from the Center for the Pacific Asian Family. I urge you to vote in favor of item thirty-five. CPAP has provided services for survivors of domestic violence and sexual assault in thirty Asian and Pacific Islander languages and dialects for four decades. We operate in council members Rue, Coretz, Buscayino, and President Weston's districts. We would like to thank you for supporting the work we do in providing lifesaving services for survivors of domestic violence. Domestic violence is the leading cause of homelessness for women, and we appreciate you ensuring DV shelter program, DV shelter programs continue to be funded. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Claudio Bovell. I'm Mr. Weston, I'm here to address the issue of Gloria Homes Apartment, forty-nine twenty-eight West Martin Luther King Boulevard. There's a cancer going on right now in regards to harassment, discrimination, to displace people out of their apartment, so I would like to meet with you or someone of your staff to discuss the matter, which means documentation. Also, a lot of people not aware that the mayor signed a tenants' rights in two thousand sixteen, December fifteenth, two thousand sixteen, to protect people from, from being displaced in regards to the crooked landlords and so forth. So right now, the Gloria Homes Apartment complex manager, Sonny Harris, is the problem, and we need to stop that, because elderly people are getting displaced, and it's not right, because why? We're close to USC, we're close to the train. What else is new? And life goes on. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ramirez.
I'll go ahead and start with my public comments, please. Ladies and gentlemen, as a homeless person by design, in the Placita area, we have nothing but gangbangers, Latino chango gangbangers, who steal from the homeless people when they're asleep. We've got people coming out of the Men's Central Jail, they rob us, they take everything. You've got nothing but Latino, despicable gangbangers and junkies who use up the bathrooms, and they leave their trash, their filth, their kaka, their urine, their stench, their vomit, everything. For those of us who don't like living like that, why should we be subjected to this garbage? Why can't the city put the fucking gangbangers in the goddamn deportation, the junkies in Skid Row, and the law-abiding citizens' bathrooms in a nice area? Why must we bathe, because there's no showers out there? But we want to look clean, we want to smell clean, we don't want to be looked like bums. Why should we have to be subjected to the constant abuse of these fucking gangbangers and junkies and wetbacks? Why? They don't flush the toilets, they don't clean, they're pigs. Deport, deport, deport!
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And now I'm going to close, Mr. City Attorney, general public comment, and we're going to go to Mr. Coretz, are you ready? Okay, then, Mr. Coretz, you have the floor.
Well, thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, colleagues, for joining us today in remembering Yom HaShoah, Holocaust Remembrance Day. And I'd like to thank my colleagues, Bob Blumenfield and Mitch Englander, for joining me here at the podium, along with our city attorney, Mike Fier, and we also have Rabbi Rubin from Congregation Ets Chaim in Hancock Park, and Roxy Nordikian, a student who went through an intercultural education program called Shades. The occasion of Holocaust remembrance is always exceptionally significant. This is the day about championing the truth about the past and the well-being of the future. The two are clearly linked, for as the philosopher George Santayana famously said, "Those who cannot remember the past are condemned to repeat us." Many of us in this room can identify fissures in their own family as a direct result of the Holocaust, families who were permanently altered and often separated from one another. There are many of us here who are Americans now because we had family who got to America to escape the atrocities of the Holocaust. And God forbid, there are still many families who suffered in the shtetls and the concentration camps, and now, three or four generations later, there's still emotional healing happening in families dealing with the damage that it caused. My own life was directly impacted as my father escaped Nazi Germany, and was a witness to many of the Nazi horrors, including Kristallnacht, a pogrom committed against Jews throughout Nazi Germany in nineteen thirty-eight, carried out by paramilitary forces and German civilians. The German authorities looked on without intervening, as nearly a hundred people were murdered, and around thirty thousand Jewish men were arrested and incarcerated in concentration camps. I learned these details in history books, because my father never could speak about the horrors he witnessed firsthand. He lost his beloved sister and many other relatives, and in fact, it's difficult for any Jews that you run into to find one that has not lost some family member in the Holocaust. Each year, and I'm more and more shocked and saddened with the passage of time, because it seems society fails to learn from the past, and is constantly at odds in the inability to treat human beings with compassion. Differences and uncertainties cascade into hate, and fear bleeds into tragedies, racial bigotry and other toxic prejudices take their toll, and there are economic crises, human psychological and moral flaws, complacency or complicity of ordinary individuals in the persecution of their neighbors, and the hatred stigmatizing and even butchering of the vulnerable. And of course, our current administration is giving passive support to neo-Nazis and white nationalists without shame, even in the wake of Charlottesville that occurred not that long ago. And just last week in Tennessee, state lawmakers declined to proceed on legislation condemning white nationalists and neo-Nazi groups. And shockingly, this is the second time that that bill failed to pass in that state. So just when we thought that approved hate and anti-Semitism were relics of the past or works of fiction, they are happening right now. It is from passive lack of resistance that these acts of hate are allowed to grow. I want to remind us all... I want to remind us all that each person is responsible to remember and stand up against inhumanity. The Holocaust was not something that happened in history to be left there. There is genocide happening around the world, there is racial tension, there is intolerance. We don't remember the Holocaust just to leave it in the past, but to remind every single one of us, not just legislators but citizens, people when faced with other different beliefs, unusual appearances, that it is necessary that we find our own humanity and meet each other there. We must stand up to injustice, and we must speak for the voiceless. And now I'd like to ask our City Attorney to say a few words.
Thank you, Mr. Coretts. Mr. President, you know, Mr. Coretts referred to Charlottesville. Here's a story from Charlottesville that hasn't been widely discussed. As the neo-Nazis and white supremacists were marching through the streets of Charlottesville, there was a synagogue holding services there. In the synagogue were dozens of worshippers. Outside the synagogue were three neo-Nazis with semi-automatic weapons. The president of the synagogue had to decide how to handle that, and in a moment which causes us all great ambivalence, he told the congregants they needed to leave through the back door so that the neo-Nazis with guns wouldn't see them. They canceled services that evening because online, the neo-Nazis and white supremacists were urging that the temple be burned down, in our country, last year. The next day, we saw the antidote to that. A U.S. Marine, not Jewish, decided his job was to be there at that synagogue to make sure it did not burn down. Our country. Shortly after the Muslim travel ban was enacted, a young girl in the San Fernando Valley alleged that her hijab had been ripped off her head. We know that throughout our society these days, immigrants are decried as the other and dehumanized. The echoes of the Holocaust are ringing too loudly here, this day, this moment, in our city, in our state, and in our nation. The front page of the Jewish Journal last week said, "Is there more to be said about the Holocaust after these generations have been in discussion of the Holocaust?" The answer is quite clear in events that occur, unfortunately, all too frequently in our society now under this administration. For those of us who care that this never be replicated in the future, there's one obligation: never to be a spectator, never to stand by, to have the guts of that Marine who chose to put himself in harm's way to be sure that others different from him could worship as they choose. Thank you, Mr. Coretts.
Thank you, Mike. Now I'd like to ask my colleague Mitch Englander to say a few words.
Thank you. Every year, I'm asked to come and speak about a personal story, something that's affected my life, my family's life, the Holocaust. And every year, I go to shul, I come here, I speak to others, and tell them about the story of what happened to my daughter when she became a bat mitzvah. This year, I'm not going to do that. It's been almost 80 years since the Holocaust. We actually have a few survivors left, not many. I was with five of them on Sunday. Six million Jews were exterminated, 11 million people. There was a demographer that recently created a projection of what it would be like today on Earth had it not been for the Holocaust. Today, on our planet, we have roughly 15 million Jews living in every country, 15 million combined. Had it not been for the death, for the execution, for the mass extermination of those 6 million, it's projected today that we would have 40 million Jews. Forty million. We're down to 15 million. We're not just asked today to remember what happened, to not forget so we don't repeat history. It actually goes way beyond just remembering and teaching and passing on what we've learned, what we saw, what we felt, what we've experienced, what our families went through to survive. It goes beyond that. It hits every moral nerve that we have. What does it mean to us as local leaders in the city of Los Angeles, in the city of angels, of what those lessons taught us today? What does that mean to us? What happened back then, when people were walking by ghettos where Jews were behind fences and barbed wire, and they didn't speak up? They didn't say a word? Why did it take so many years for the rest of the nation's leaders to acknowledge what was happening to the Jewish people? What's happening today? Well, I think about a poem that we often read on this day, a famous poem by Martin Niemöller, a prominent Protestant pastor who emerged as an outspoken public foe of Adolf Hitler. And because of that, he spent seven years in concentration camps where the Nazis locked him up. And he's perhaps best remembered for this poem, but I'm not gonna read this poem as he wrote it. I'm gonna paraphrase it for today, for here, for Los Angeles. First, they came for the addicts, but I did not speak up because I was not an addict. Then they came for the mentally ill, but I did not speak up because I am not mentally ill. Then they came for the homeless, but I did not speak up because I am not homeless. Then they came for the Jews, I did not speak up because I am not Jewish. And then they came for me, and there was no one left to speak for me. I paraphrase that today because each and every one of us gets calls each and every day to our local offices. We're stopped at the grocery stores, we're stopped in restaurants to say, "Get those people out of here, away from my front yard, out of our parks, out of our libraries. They can't live in front of our businesses and their vehicles. They're mentally ill, they're aggressive, they're combative, they steal, they smell. They're awful people." We all hear that every day. "What are you doing? Our city has come to ruin. It's worse now than we've ever seen, they're everywhere. They belong incarcerated, locked up in mental health institutions. How dare we spend our taxpayer dollars helping them?" We hear that every day. We could talk about what's happening in our nation's capital, we could also talk about what led us here because of the Holocaust. We could talk about remembering, and we need to do that. We could also talk about the challenges we face today in our own backyards, in our own communities, and that's what today is also about. Compassionate, caring, uncompromised, unconditional love for our neighbors, for those most in need, for those ignored, and for those who have lost all pride and dignity. That's what we're here for. Thank you.
And now I'd like to ask Councilman Robert Blumenfield to say a few words.
Thank you. Just wanna build upon what my colleagues have been talking about, Holocaust Remembrance Day, remembering the lives that were snuffed out. You know, when we talk about the number, I liked that you extrapolated what that would look like today, but it's also important to think about what that meant back then. Six million Jews was roughly 2/3 of all the Jews that were on the planet at that time. Imagine any peoples where 2/3 are wiped out. Six million Jews, it's about the number of Jews that are currently in Israel now. It's pretty amazing when you think about it, and pretty awful. But we not only remember the tragedy, but on Holocaust Remembrance Day, we remember the indomitable spirit of those who survived, of those who built lives afterwards, of those who made it possible for us to stand here today and remember those who had perished and be committed to moving forward. And we also know that the Holocaust, while it was a singular, and it was sumi generous in terms of the scale, that we've had other genocides over these years, whether they've been in Cambodia, or Rwanda, or Armenia. Man's ability to be cruel and kill mankind has not ceased. And we see it, as was mentioned, we see the beginnings of it here in Los Angeles in a variety of ways, and this country and this world, not only have hate crimes been up, but the level of discourse has gotten to a point that we need to be concerned. And on a day like today, when we reflect about this awful tragedy, we need to bring it forward and reflect about how we can make a difference today, how our lives can reflect a promise and a hope. So we give, by being up here today and remembering those who perished and remembering those who survived, we also give voice to those who will move forward, and all of us today join together in doing that. So thank you for being here to remember the Holocaust.
Thank you, Bob. And next, I would like to introduce Roxy Nordikian to say a few words. Roxy currently serves as an intern in my office and is also a graduate of the Shades Program. The program is a partnership with the L.A. Superior Court and the Museum of Tolerance. It provides youth juror training for a specialized teen court focusing on bullying incidents rooted in prejudice and bias. Shades stands for Stop Hate and Delinquency by Empowering Students. The program diverse young people from the formal court system and promotes restorative justice through innovative sentencing. The L.A. Superior Court Teen Court Program operates at more than 30 L.A. County schools and is the largest and fastest-growing network of teen juror justice in the country. Through this program, the student jurors and their adult partners promote understanding of the negative impact of bias on the community and advance hate crime and incident prevention through new community service sentencing. And what better time when Holocaust Remembrance is being celebrated than to remember by bringing Roxy up to talk about youth who are learning about tolerance and mutual respect? And so welcome, Roxy.
Thank you, councilmembers. Good morning. My name is Roxy Nordikian. I am currently an undergraduate student at USC and the Youth Director for PESA, a community-based organization for the Los Angeles Superior Court Teen Court Program. For those who don't know, the Teen Court Program is an intervention program for which provides selected juvenile offenders with opportunity to be questioned, judged, and sentenced by jury of their peers. The program diverse youth from the formal court system and promotes restorative justice through innovative sentencing. As the largest and fastest-growing network of teen court juror justice, operating in 42 schools in L.A. County, and given the fact that hate crimes in Los Angeles rose 24%, we partnered with the Museum of Tolerance to provide a youth juror training for specialized teen court, focusing on bullying incidents rooted in prejudice and bias. The Shades Stop Hate and Delinquency by Empowering Students seeks to combat hate and internal tolerance among the youth of Los Angeles. From meeting and speaking to Dr. Terry Roberts, one of the Little Rock Nine, Ella Mandel, a Holocaust survivor, Tim Zoll, a former white supremacist, and Sylvia Mendez, who carries the legacy of Mendez versus Westminster, thousands of students, including myself, are gaining greater self-awareness of personal biases and enhancing empathy for people whom are different than ourselves. In remembrance of the infamous Auschwitz concentration camp, began to receive individuals for extermination, and also in remembrance of the Trail of Tears, we have planned an event for May 20th at Pan Pacific Park. I invite you all to present, I invite you all to be present as we will have student-led conversations, presentations, and critical group discussions, and we'll be honoring Maria Elena, a champion of equal rights. It is an unfortunate circumstance, but many ethnicities suffer the torment of genocide. As a teen court alumni, Shades participant, and an Armenian-American myself, I understand the importance of educating individuals on the harm hate crimes caused humanity, may be the Armenian, Rwanda, Cambodia genocides, or the Holocaust. I thank you for your time, and we'll leave you with a quote by Albert Einstein. "The world is a dangerous place to live, not because of people who are evil, but because of the people who don't do anything about it." Thank you.
Thank you, Roxy. And now I'd like to close our program with words of reflection and a prayer. My good friend Rabbi Ruben from Congregation Etz Chaim in Hancock Park.
Thank you, Councilman Coretts. It's wonderful to see, to be here, and be able to address this distinguished council, as I've done now for the last few years. In particular, because it is not only the Holocaust Remembrance Day, but it's also a day where my father, a blessed memory, was liberated from Bochum Baal. And so I speak on his behalf. We've heard such very moving words articulated by these distinguished gentlemen here. It's a very important day, as they have said, not just to remember the past, but to reflect and to commit ourselves for the future. So I pray today that as we commemorate the Yom HaShoa, that we not only remember the victims of the greatest crime committed by man against man, the young, the old, the innocent, the millions of Jews, the million-and-a-half children starved, shot, given lethal injections, gassed, burnt, and turned into ash because they were deemed guilty of a crime of being We remember what happens when hate takes hold of the human heart and turns it to stone, what happens when victims cry for help and there's no one listening, what happens when humanity fails to recognize that those who are not in our image are nonetheless in God's image. We remember and we pay tribute to the survivors who bore witness to what happened, to the victims so that those robbed of their lives won't be robbed also of their deaths. Remember and give thanks to the righteous of nations who saved lives, often at risk of their own, teaching us how the darkest night we can light a candle of hope. Today, as we commemorate Yom HaShoa, we call on you, Almighty God, to help us hear your voice that says in every generation, "Do not murder. Do not stand idly by with the blood of your neighbor. Do not oppress the stranger." We know that whilst we don't have the ability to change the past, we can change the future. We know that whilst we cannot bring the dead back to life, we can ensure that their memories live on and that their debts were not in vain. And so, as we commemorate today, we commit ourselves to one simple act, to remember. Let's never forget so we assure ourselves it will never happen again. May the souls of the victims be bound in the bond of everlasting life. Amen. I also just want to express a deep appreciation, Councilman Weston isn't here, but my dear friend, Councilman Rue as well, for their support to our congregation, and I welcome Councilman Englander, that the next time he wants to speak about his daughter's bat mitzvah, it can be the same. it can be done in our shul.
Thank you, Madam President and colleagues. I don't know if there's anyone in the horseshoe that has signed up to speak. If not, I'll just add one thing I was just thinking about as we were having this conversation. I read an interesting book a few weeks ago about the lives of fifty childhood Holocaust survivors, which aren't spoken about very often, the children that were five, six, ten years old. And it was fifty stories, each a short autobiography of how they survived. And in every case, there was a certain amount of luck to it, but in every case, there was at least one, if not several, if not a dozen or two people that had to risk their lives to hide them and protect them. And they would be in one household, and maybe a year later, they'd be moved to another household. But we have to remember, because we don't really think about that much, with an event that we think of as the most unspeakable evil, we also had so many tens of thousands of people that one by one risked their lives to take in a child or a family. Although the most chilling thing of all is now, we're in a situation that is somewhat reminiscent, as we have people that have to be hidden and are afraid to pick up their children at school or go to their jobs for fear that they may be deported. And we have to be sure that we stand up to that and make sure it never goes any further steps in the wrong direction. And so, I thank you all for commemorating this horrible event in human history, and once again, to make sure we fight to prevent these things from being repeated. Thank you so much, colleagues.
Thank you, Mr. Koritz.
Madam Clerk, we have one card for item one K. Fernando Vitela, are you here? Fernando Vitela, are you here? I don't see anyone by that name. And by the way, that item has been received and filed on item one K, just for the record. I don't think the person is here to speak, but I just wanted to note that. Madam Clerk, can we go ahead and, we have Mr. Spindler on item one. Go ahead.
And as Mr. Spindler makes his way forward, the Department of Building and Safety does request that items one A, one B, and one T be continued to May ninth.
Well, with that objection, that will be the order. Go ahead, Mr. Spindler.
Yeah, it's good. First of all, thank you for cutting off general public comment early to continue to violate our civil rights. So, let's see, these fucked up liens, I'm here to bitch, bitch, bitch about these liens, liens, liens. Now, we just got done talking about a Holocaust. Now, we're talking about a lien Holocaust. And in the name of the Holocaust, you gotta forgive all of these liens, because these liens are the same thing as the Holocaust. You're putting people in ovens because they can't pay these liens. You Jews are putting these Latino people in their ovens by not being able to pay these goddamn excessive liens. You have to waive all these liens. If not, you're the same goddamn thing as Hitler. You're putting us all in the economic oven. Fuck you.
That concludes speakers for item number one. Just go ahead and vote on the remaining balance of item number one. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Fifteen eyes.
Madam Clerk, go ahead and move on to item thirty-five.
And Madam President, on item thirty-five, amending motions thirty-five A and thirty-five B have been submitted, posted, and circulated for council's consideration.
Okay, we have two amending motions before us, members. Mr. Sadio, you had called this item special. Did you want to speak on this? Item thirty-five? No, Mr. Englander?
I was just gonna ask for item forty, if we're done with thirty-five, please send forth with.
Fourth with, let me just finish with item thirty-five. Thank you. Mr. Sadio does not wish to speak on item thirty-five. Madam Clerk, go ahead and open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the votes, and item thirty-four.
Fifteen eyes.
Thirty-five as amended. Thank you. And item number forty, fourth with for Mr. Englander. Madam Clerk, has the amendment for item twenty been circulated yet?
Yes, on item twenty, amending motion twenty A has been submitted and circulated and posted for council's consideration.
Members, just go ahead and vote on item number twenty as amended. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
Fifteen eyes.
What's before us, Madam Clerk?
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Posted and referred. Members, are there any announcements? Seeing now, can we please rise for adjourning motions, including members of our audience, Adjourning motions. Mr. Englander, you had requested to go first. Mr. Englander, whenever you're ready.
All right, thank you. Actually, I have two. Today, I ask that we adjourn in memory of Alice Handelman. Alice passed away on Sunday, April first, due to complications from liver disease in combination with an unfortunate fall. She was born in Great Neck, New York, to Evelyn and Charles Fleas. After her time in New York, she lived in Newport Beach, Rhode Island, Washington, D.C., and the Virgin Islands before settling here in California in nineteen seventy-eight. She met and married the love of her life, Ira Handelman, Los Angeles, July eighth, nineteen seventy-nine. Her two adoring children, Ariel and Sam, brought Alice constant love and joy. Having earned a degree in early childhood development from Emerson College in Boston, Alice was a dedicated kindergartner teacher. She adored children and took pride in shaping their futures. She also had a stint as a fashion model that was reflected in her extraordinary sense of style, unlike her husband. Her grace, along with childlike enthusiasm for life, made her both alluring and charming. But if you asked Alice, her most passionate pursuit and legacy was her effort in addressing inclusion and acceptance for people with special needs, especially new mothers and children who needed support, companionship, and community. She was diagnosed with MS at eighteen and became an activist dedicated to creating reliable methods to open and shape minds. Alice introduced the Kids on the Block program to L.A. Jewish day schools, which today is thriving. She entertained and charmed children with unique life-size puppets while teaching them how to look beyond physical differences to see the beauty in each other. Alice's personal passions include travel, time with her friends and her family, and always accompanied with laughter. Her inherent humor, kindness, warmth, her genuine spirit, collected friends and admirers at every turn. She will be missed by all who knew her and loved her, and her spirit will serve as a lasting inspiration to all of us. Alice is survived by her husband, Ira, her children, Ariel and Sam. She will be missed by all. On a personal note, some people know that I go back many, many, many years, the Handelman family, with Ira, who's here today, joining us, our thoughts, our condolences are with you, your family. Ira and I, many, many years ago in another life, were actually business partners and shared an office, we're strategic, had a strategic alliance, whatever that means. But what it really meant was I got to see Ira almost every day, for years and years and years. And every time I talked to Ira, to this, to this day and up until Sunday, the first thing out of his mouth, every single time, was asking about how my family was, and specifically by name, how was Lindsay, how was Lauren, how was Jane? And then, without pause, without even giving you the opportunity to ask Ira anything, he would immediately break into how Alice is doing, how his family's doing, how everybody's doing in his family, what the kids are up to, and telling us a whole life story. It took ten minutes just to say hello to Ira every time you saw him and talked to him. And for those of you that know, you know. That won't change. We'll continue to talk about her and the memories and the life that you've built and the kids you brought into this world. Your relationship, your marriage, is an inspiration to all of us. Your loyalty to each other, the years of happiness and dedication, what you've done in bringing two amazing children into this world and raising them with morals and ethics, honesty and focus, charisma and compassion, is unparalleled and an inspiration. So, not only she missed, but our loss is very much with you and your family. May she rest in peace. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Englander. Mr. Price?
Those condolences for the Handelman family. Alice was a special spirit. She and my wife shared trials and tribulations over MS, but Alice was always very positive, very, very warm, very loving, and her spirit will be truly missed. Thank you.
Our condolences are. Mr. Brumfield.
My voice, I mean, Mr. Englander did a great job of talking about Alice, but Ira, your being here, you're always here, you're part of this, this great city, and you've been part of this city, and not only you're a friend, but you and Alice were constituents living nearby in Woodland Hills. So, it's, it's really heartbreaking, you know, and I know how difficult this is for you, and it is for all of us who know you and who love you. So, our hearts are with you today in moving forward. We know that your love for Alice was palpable every time you talked about her, every time you guys were together. So, I know this is a difficult time, but may she rest in peace and know that we are, we are, as a council and as a city, are with you in spirit and here in person.
Mr. Ru?
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to rise and add, and thank you, Councilman Englander, for that eloquent adjournment, but Ira, the inherent beauty of Alice was clear to all who knew her, and she was full of joy and laughter. And although I never knew her as well as I know you, I know that you both loved each other very, very much. And I just want to add that, you know, you were talking about the great treatment your family received, and that your family asked for anyone who wants to honor Alice to make a donation to the Providence Tarzana Foundation. It's a place that makes health care possible for everyone in need, regardless of income. And my thoughts and prayers are with you and your children, Ariel and Sam. May God be with you.
Mr. Koritz?
Madam President, I think the one thing that hasn't really been said quite enough is how difficult it is to live with MS for so many decades, and I don't believe that Alice could have lived the amazing life that she did without the unflagging support and love of Ira and her children for decades. And she was an amazing person that was reflected in her funeral, which was attended by hundreds of people, and one amazing speech after another by very dear friends that she had made. So, we're sad to see that this has happened, but we are grateful that she had an amazing life that couldn't have happened without her remarkable family. So, we all thank you for that as well.
Mr. Bonner?
Madam President, Ira, I want to join with several of my colleagues in expressing condolences to you. Something, this is rather rare. I don't think I've ever seen so many council members join in on an adjourning motion. On this side of the horseshoe alone, there were four people who had written comments prepared because they were going to do the adjourning motion for Alice. Even more rare is I find myself associating myself with comments made by Mr. Englander, which I rarely do. That was very well done, Mitch. Ira, most everything has been said, but I just want to note that you and Alice had a very special kind of love. It was very obvious, it was abundant, and it was very warm, and it's the kind of love and relationship I think most of us aspire to and try to emulate. And that says a lot about you, and it certainly says a lot about Alice.
Thank you, members. And Ira, my sincerest condolences to you and your family. Thank you. May she rest in peace. Go ahead, Mr. Englander.
Another adjourning motion. Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Sadio wants to comment on this as well.
Mr. Sadio, I thought you had your, you want to comment on?
Yes, I was also on the cue for this. Ira, of this I know, you will endure pain that you have yet to imagine. Your marriage was so special and so unique, and it will be with you the rest of your life, every single second, every single moment of your existence. You will never forget, you will never not feel the love that you have, but it will be painful in ways that you have yet to imagine. I say that to you as someone who has had this experience. Your life will be so different. The partnership that you had, the balance of the yin and yang, the completing each other's sentences, the sharing of each other's food, even the space where you sleep will never change. And know that and embrace that, for it may be the only way that you will survive. You and I will continue to live and endure and survive, but it will never be the same. God bless you, my brother.
Mr. Englander?
All right, thank you. I ask that we adjourn as well today in memory of a friend who is a friend to many of us here in this room, a friend to many throughout the region, a friend to many victims over the years of rape because he was the voice that fought for them and did so much. Today, I ask that we adjourn in memory of Armin Arabian. Armin Arabian was a former Los Angeles prosecutor and judge who rose through the ranks to serve on the California Supreme Court. The son of Armenian immigrant, or Armenian immigrants, Armin served on the state's highest court from nineteen ninety to nineteen ninety-six, frequently spoke often of his Armenian heritage and addressed Armenian groups. Armenian groups. His grandfather and uncle were both killed in 1915 in the Armenian genocide. He was born December 12th, 1934, New York City, the eldest of five children. He served as the first lieutenant in the U.S. Army in an airborne paratrooper group and received undergraduate law degrees at Boston University. After admission to the California bar in 1962, he worked as a deputy district attorney in Los Angeles and then entered private law practice in Van Nuys. Former Governor Ronald Reagan appointed Arabian to the Los Angeles Municipal Court in 1972 and later elevated him to the supreme, to the Superior Court. Armin stood out for his legal writing, which was unusually lively and often punctuated with literal, literary allusions. He most often remembered, and is often remembered as a jurist for his work on behalf of rape victims. In fact, he broke the legal ground in Los Angeles as a Superior Court judge in 1973 when he refused to tell a jury in a rape trial to consider the victim's testimony with caution. Armin's decision bucked the law, and the California Supreme Court overturned the instruction two years later. Armin Arabian went on to write Law Journal articles and other pioneering rulings on the subject matter. He authored a ruling that said doctors were not required to give patients statistical odds to obtain informed consent for a procedure. One of his most memorable legal writings was in a case about cats. In fact, Mr. Coretz would like this, an animal he adored too. He called the other justices cherry for upholding a condominium association's right to ban cats and other pets for units. Arabian quoting Albert Schweitzer believed that there are two means of refuge from misery of life, music and cats. He was often seen in the courthouse steps of the San Francisco, in San Francisco petting cats brought there by a rescue group, and a cat named Red Boy was his constant companion after the death of his wife. Armin retired from the courts at 60 years old. After leaving the state high court, Arabian worked as a private judge, became involved in civic matters in the San Fernando Valley. He was an avid Dodger fan, and he was a vibrant and engaging person. At 83 years old, he passed away in his sleep last Wednesday at his home in the San Fernando Valley. Retired judge had appeared to be healthy until the end. They say that he passed away, and his family says he passed away of a broken heart. He was hardworking and passionate, but when he lost Nancy, that's what really drove him to where he ultimately lost his life. Arabian is survived by his daughter Allison, Robert, four grandchildren, two sisters, and a brother. I, I remember before I worked in City Hall for Greg Smith, before I was involved in politics even. My first time that I got to meet Armin Arabian was at the Honorable Armin Arabian Luncheon, and it was a gathering that happens every year in the San Fernando Valley, and it honors unique individuals and leaders throughout the valley. And it was one of the coolest things that I had ever been to and seen, where you had somebody that was a local hero for what he did for so many victims over so many years and dedicated his life. And because of his life story, where he came from, and the fact that he lost family members in the genocide, and then became Superior Court judge, and then went on to help so many victims, I was just in awe of him. And, and I thought, wow, I'll never miss one of these luncheons again. This is just, this is so unique. And to have somebody of such distinction and honor, actually taking his time to recognize others that volunteer in the community and, and get involved in civic engagement. I never missed a lunch since then. And then, just a couple of years ago, I had the honor of being honored by him at his own luncheon, and I'll never forget that. And in fact, at the lunch, he, he came up to me and said, we've got something I need you, ask you to do. And I said, you know I'll do anything for you. What would you like me to do? He said, well, Brad Sherman can't make it, and we have a flag from Brad, from the congressman. We want you to present it on his behalf, but we want you to do it verbatim in Brad's voice with his speech. And for all of you that know that speech, we pulled it off, and Armin Arabian helped me write it and remembered verbatim the congressman's speech that he gives each and every day to every community, and we had a lot of fun with that. And anyway, he will be missed, certainly by many, and missed by me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Englander. Looking to my left, Mr. Bonner?
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, I'd like to adjourn today in the memory of two different constituents. The first is Stephen Baczko of Pacific Palisades. The Hollywood superstar passed away on Easter at his home, surrounded by his family, at age 74. Stephen Baczko was the driving force behind Hill Street Blues, NYPD Blue, and LA Law, as well as Doogie Howser. He really was a huge force in the 80s and 90s in transforming television, creating some of our most popular television shows at the time. He is survived by his wife Dana, who is the head of the California Coastal Commission right now, his children Jesse, Jeffrey, and Melissa, his sister Joanna Frank, and his first wife Barbara Bossen. I'd also like to ask us to adjourn in memory of Pam Emerson. Pam is a former Venice resident and a longtime staff member of the California Coastal Commission who passed away about a week and a half ago after a decades-long fight with lupus. Pam grew up in San Diego, graduated from Radcliffe, and they got a master's in city planning from MIT. She worked briefly for the city of Los Angeles before going to work for the California Coastal Commission, where she was there for, for decades and was an institution, a warm and friendly face who actually helped people get to a yes through a confusing and bureaucratic process. She worked in the Santa Barbara office and then in Long Beach. She worked on most of the Venice projects, which is where I got to know her in the 90s. Her projects included the restoration of the Venice Canals, the Venice Pier project, the Oceanfront Walk renovation back in the year 2000. She did great work with local organizations called Beyond Baroque, LA Theater Works, Pacific Resident Theater, and Spark. And she served after she retired from the Coastal Commission as counsel, then council president Glanter's appointee to the Los Angeles City Ethics Commission for a couple of years. She's survived by her brother Carlos Dahadeh of St. Louis, her son Nathaniel, and daughter Eva, and their families, including a number of cousins. May she rest in peace.
Thank you, council member. Councilmember Mark, who's here, Dawson?
So much, Mr. Chair. I have two adjourning motions for today. The first is for Ms. Maybel Pittman, who we lost in the month of March. She was born here in Los Angeles in 1939, a rarity for African-Americans before the great migration in the 1940s. She went to high school here locally, had five children, worked for several decades at Good Samaritan Hospital as a health care professional. Once she retired, she opened up a daycare center out of her house on 105th Street in Maine. During the time of the crack cocaine epidemic, Ms. Pittman became especially close to grandparents who had to take in kids, who, who, take in their grandkids because their, their parents were incarcerated, and she became an activist around the rights of grandparents in the foster care system, which at the time she started, the foster care system did not recognize the rights of grandparents as it related to a child in the foster care system. And she also was a community activist and a very active member of the Police Advisory Board. In fact, every officer in the Southeast Division referred to her as Commander Pittman. You would routinely, if you drove by her house, you'd see a couple squad cars parked out front. Maybe they're inside having coffee, or maybe they're inside taking orders for what they're going to do for the neighborhood. And at the same time, Ms. Pittman had a relationship with police officers. She also had a relationship with lots of the gang members, and so she'd call them into her house too and say, you know, guys, knock it off, or you guys got to get together and work this problem out. You can't make us all suffer as a result of it, a result of your differences. And so Ms. Pittman is one of those skeletal bones in the community that it will take us all a long time to recover from her loss. She had a long and painful sickness and was able to slip away peacefully last March, and had a big funeral service in South Los Angeles. So we ask that we adjourn in the memory of Maybel Pittman. Also, another stalwart of our community, Ms. Justine Clarity, who moved here from Texas at the age of five years old. She was an active member of SEIU Local 99, a cafeteria cook for LAUSD in the time period of our history where you could be a cafeteria cook and buy a house and have a family and, and become active in your community, in your church. She was a very active member of St. Matthew's Baptist Church for 50 years and a very active member of Community Coalition. In fact, one of the first people that Karen Bass recruited to the Community Coalition when she started in 1989. Famous for her big Sunday dinners and family and community gatherings on, on her block there in the 9th Council District. So again, we ask that we adjourn in the memory of Ms. Justine Clarity.
Thank you, Mr. Harris-Dawson. Anybody else to my left? Seeing none, to the right? Thank you, members. Council is adjourned.[1738.08][1738.08][1738.08]